Safety Committee Meeting. Besire City Council Health and Safety Committee is meeting in a special meeting. Members present are Bruce Trucca, James May, Mark McKiever, and myself, Chair. This meeting was called by Mayor Reeser for the limited purpose of discussing purchase of an ambulance with CARES Act Fund. And you have in front of you in your packet a purchase order with the information. And Chief, unless you want to wait and let the mayor speak first?
Right ahead.
You need a copy of this to add to that?
No, I've got it on my phone here. So more or less, when we got the go-ahead from the administration to find a, more or less to looking at purchasing the ambulance, I reached out to a couple of the salespeople and it became a, more or less, an emergency to try to get this done, that everybody, demos aren't to, really aren't to be had anywhere and the, so the choices were very limited. So I got in contact, actually, our normal sales rep wasn't able to find one for us. So we ended up, ended up having a couple of choices and went through and more or less narrowed down to what we, what we needed and that it would fit our needs. Main thing was is this has got, it's got some more, the ultraviolet air purification system on it and another UV air and surface disinfectant lamps in it that more or less meets the needs of what, what we're trying to prevent or to more or less decontaminate the unit.
Do you want to explain to the committee why you're looking at a demo and not ordering a new one?
Um, timeframe right now for ordering a new demo or a new squad is, because of COVID, chassis are in very, more or less backward and few companies aren't saying that they can get one until July of next year.
And using CARES Act funding, we would have to...
We have to have it spent by the, by what?
December 31st, I believe.
December 30th.
30th.
Is it cheaper to purchase this way?
Uh, it's under state purchasing.
I'm sorry?
It's under this, through state purchasing.
So they don't know.
So the pricing's...
Need more demo?
Mileage-wise, you said this one has?
Uh, two, about 2,000 miles on it, is it? So...
Almost...
Yeah.
It's brand-new.
Pretty much brand-new. And we, this, this, the, this actual unit was priced higher and we, we worked out a deal to make them lower it by ten.
Negotiate.
Negotiated it down.
Mayor, do you have anything else to add?
Nope. I think Chief has, you know, we have COVID money that's been provided by the federal government and this is something that we do need, so...
And I just said it's something we know we're going to be needing.
Yeah.
And I think it's a marvelous use of the funds.
It's a great one.
Is there any questions of anyone, committee or otherwise, that they have for Chief?
And I couldn't just further add that our current ambulance is 10 years old now.
Starting to have some trouble.
And starting to have some, we've, starting to have some problems with it, so it would be nice to be using it as a backup.
We're keeping it.
Keeping it, but using it more as a backup than as first in line.
Doug? I hate to ask, I'm not a committee, but I'd tell them, is there the possibility that we can get some of the repairs done for our old one-two with the CARES money?
Like the special UV stuff and...
Probably not, and with its age, it doesn't make sense to do that, because we know that, we're going to, sorry if I'm speaking out of turn here, but I think we know that, you know, when we get to the point where we're taking on our EMS full-time, we're going to probably need to send it in.
Probably want to need another one.
So we'll be looking another year or two down the road again and replacing that one.
Just wanted to ask.
So what we're seeking here is a motion for an emergency resolution to permit the city to enter into, the service director to enter into contract to purchase this. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion passes as an emergency. And with this being a special meeting, there's nothing else that can come before, so we will adjourn at 6:35 PM. Five-minute break until the Finance Committee. Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, 6:40 PM. Members present Kevin Myers, Bruce Trucca, James May, and myself, Chair. Besire City Council Finance Committee will meet in special session at 6:40 PM on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. The meeting has been called by Mayor Jeff Reeser for the limited purpose of discussing purchase of an ambulance with CARES Act Funds and various appropriations. Number two, the ambulance purchase. As you've seen earlier, with the, from the Safety Committee, we approved purchase to enter into a purchase of the ambulance for $295,000, well, $292,484. And we're asking for a resolution authorizing and directing the Besire's Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Besire to enter into a contract or contracts with P-Fund Superior Sales not to exceed the amount of the CARES Act relief funds for the purchase of an ambulance and repairing an emergency. The amount that we have available is $295,000 of the COVID, uh, coronavirus relief funds. So...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll move to request emergency legislation.
I'll request this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussions?
Uh-uh.
All right. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. Various appropriations, totally, so hang this over to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, you'll notice that I did add additional appropriations tonight to the previous appropriations you had approved. Uh, and the first one is actually in, um, the General Fund Security in Persons and Property in the Police Department for $3,000 under contractual services. We received, uh, $3,000 last week through the Recovery Act. This came to us through, uh, the City of Mansfield and it's for our quick-response team that helps with our, uh, fight against drugs. So we need to get that appropriated because we do have people that help transport and, whatever, and need to be reimbursed for that, so we need this money in, in the fund. And then the second one, we've received, I think, the final round of CARES Act funds from the state and we just received it last week. So we need to appropriate to the Coronavirus Relief Fund under general government of $423,924.06.
And does anybody have any questions to the board?
Yes. I'll move to request emergency legislation for the appropriations.
Do I have a second?
Yes, we're in selection.
Second. Is there any other discussion questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Since this is a special Finance Committee meeting, I am adjourning our meeting at 6:40 PM.
I'm going to go ahead and call a Special Service Committee meeting to order at 6:53 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Lisa Lawson, Ciaran Scherr, and myself, Chair. Besire City Council Service Committee will meet in special session on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. The meeting has been called by Mayor Reeser for the limited purpose of discussing an application for Ohio Public Works Commission Grant.
Mr. Chairman, yes, we need to apply for the OPWC grant for emergency. The work will be done next year, 2021. There's two pieces of legislation. One is for the water line replacement on, that's on Wood Lawn from Highland, from, East Wood Lawn from Highland to Whitestone and then, and also under the river on West Mary Street, which needs to be replaced. Uh, and the second piece of legislation is for sewer work that we would like to do, some, uh, which is, uh, on West Mary, there's a couple of different sections that need some repair. And we want to add some manholes out in, on Highland, on Reed Street, which we can't get into those areas right now to clean them, but to be able to maintain them, we want to add those three by using some of the OPWC funds. And then there's two other places, uh, we want to add a manhole, Poplar and West Mansfield, down by the Crazy Fox, you know, which, uh, there's nothing there we can get into, so we want to be able to get in there, clean that out on a regular basis as needed. And then we have a catch basin that needs to be repaired on the west side of Washington Square that's, uh, just crumbling and falling apart. It's, it's just, uh, needs to be replaced and completely. And that's what we want to, we have to, like, the OPWC funds, it has to be done as emergency because we have a dent of mine on that, so...
So are we just amending?
Well, I think we put in a separate piece of legislation right now.
Yeah, um, we had an original request to do a, an application for the resolution for the, apply for the water line projects. Then it was communicated to me that, that we, in addition to the water line projects, we also wanted to do a manhole on Reed Street. So the request was only for the water lines. We did a second draft legislation that was water line and manhole on Reed Street. But we may need a third piece of draft legislation, that is, water hole, or water line and manhole on Reed Street and, uh, on Poplar at West Mansfield and a catch basin on the west side of Washington Square. So the original request was just for the water line, an application for the water lines, but that grant application keeps getting bigger. Uh, so, um, if you want to include all that in this one, we'll, you know, you can use the second one and, which has the B Street typed in and add in also manhole, Poplar, and West Mansfield, and also the catch basin on the west side of Washington Square. So up to you, would you want to request, try to cover everything, have multiple drafts so that you can kind of pick which one you want to go with?
I guess.
And we didn't have enough.
Do we believe that's the end of the amending?
I don't know.
The reason I ask is do we or can we add since, or anything else that comes up?
That's, that was the list I was given today.
Okay.
And I, I thought, I assumed that, that was...
Probably due pretty soon.
Yes, do, yeah. I don't know, do you know what the OPWC deadline is, Joyce?
I was thinking that it was like today?
I think it's, might be...
It might be tomorrow.
I think it's, I think it's tomorrow or Thursday.
That was tomorrow.
You ready for, sure? I'll, uh, move to request emergency legislation for this resolution as amended, including, uh, the second one in the packet, as amended, including the manhole at Poplar and Mansfield and the catch basin on Washington Square.
On the west side of Washington Square?
I did write that down.
Southwest. Southwest corner.
Southwest corner.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just go, Washington Square?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Motion passes unanimously and I'm going to adjourn at 6:58.
I want to make it mayor. I mean, I've been actually talking to cats a lot, so I've talked a lot, friends of ours, get those plants or bikes back on the river. They're, they're around. Pass, citizens could be notified. I've got a... Um, we're away from... Yeah, I've got a, I think it's...
Yes.
The first police lines are calling.
Yeah, please, some of those...
For the... They wanted it to work, so he's the option. I wanted to do it now, but the board... Don't forget this, real serious. Oh, yeah? Yeah. Go Dodgers, law. Now, go Rays.
I'm going to call the October 20th Regular Council Meeting to order 7:00 PM. Please stand, join me collectively.
We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Myers. Here. Trucca. Here. Sherrod. Here. Poe.
Brother.
All set.
Here.
Um, before you are minutes from October 5th, 2020, special meeting.
Isaac.
How you doing?
Is anybody having a question on that?
I'm...
Get motion to approve, then?
25 bucks.
So move. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Also, before you are minutes from the October 8th, 2020, special meeting. Anybody have any question on that? And motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Communications and petitions? Do you not have any? So granting permission for visitors to speak? If you want to speak to council, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hill Press Drive. I have some comments concerning the October 5th council meeting minutes that you just approved. Page one of nine, under Visitors, line 11, states, "DeShawn further noted that on April the 14th, 2020, the Finance Committee requested that the basic work period of a legal assistant may be up to 40 hours per week with any additional hours to be authorized by the Law Director." And that since then, there hasn't been any further discussion about the matter in committee authorizing the change stating that the basic work period of a legal assistant shall be 40 hours per week with any additional hours to be authorized by the Law Director. Ratliff responded that the change in language may have been missed in the drafting of various versions of the ordinance during the year and added that the language in Ordinance number 25, 2020 is what had been suggested by DeShawn. I should go back and point out that this verbiage that I just read was, uh, yeah, it was under the Communications and Petitions, yeah. First off, I want to point out that the Law Director also went on to say at that meeting, after listening to the audio recording, and it's not in the minutes, Law Director Ratliff went on to say that an email with copies of it, which I'm assuming he's referring to the draft legislation, Ordinance 25, 2020, was sent out saying that I, Vicki DeShawn, had indicated that this was the one that was correct. I do wish to point out that at no time did I indicate that Ordinance number 25, 2020 was correct. In fact, I did not have an opportunity to review Ordinance number 25, 2020 until after it was passed by council on September the 15th, 2020 and expressed my concerns about that ordinance at the October 5th, 2020 special council meeting. I remind the Law Director that it was my seven-month involvement with council on chapters 111 and 113 where emails were exchanged with me and where I set forth my approval of the final draft and therefore it had nothing to do with the main power ordinance. Page two of nine, Understanding Committee Reports. This has to do with the joint regular committee meeting that was held September 17th, 2020. One, Public Participation. The second paragraph states, "Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hill Press Drive, ask if the issue of infrastructure ownership and maintenance responsibility at Kincora Drive pertains to Phase 1 of the Villas at Whitestone or Phase 2 or 3." Mark McKiever responded that he had no information on the matter. DeShawn noted that Resolution number 249, 2001, passed on October 16th, 2001, provided for the city's acceptance of Phase 1 of the Villas at Whitestone's infrastructure. DeShawn detailed a memo, a memo from J. Dennis Fleckner listing the conditions for acceptance of the Phase 1 infrastructure as summarized in the minutes for council's meeting of October 2nd, 2001. She added that at council's October 15th, 2020 regular meeting, members maintained that no records exist that the city is responsible for the infrastructure on Kincora Drive. What I said was that at Tuesday's meeting, members maintained that no records. If you wish to put a date in there, the correct date is September 15th, not October 15th. And I do believe that's the only comments and corrections that I have to your minutes. Thank you.
So do we, do we want to...
That's amended?
Unapprove them or... Amend them? Where should we amend them at?
The date.
Just that date, that's it?
For sure that, at least that.
Oh, and I definitely want it amended where it says that Ratliff stated that I suggested the language in Ordinance 25, 2020 because I did not.
You either strike that?
I don't care, but you're not keeping that, I don't, you're not keeping that statement. You either strike it or you, because I did not. I had nothing to do with Ordinance 25, 2020.
The easiest thing would be to strike that sentence. So, striking of that sentence and changing the date. Would that satisfy you?
Yes.
Um, does anybody on council have any comments or other suggestions?
No, I wouldn't say we did that.
Okay, it's been moved by Lisa, we need a second. In favor of amending minutes? Opposed? Minutes are amended. Does anybody else want to address council? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. None, moving on to Standing Committee affairs, Service Committee, Mr. Trucca. Okay. Besire City Council Joint Regular Committee Meeting met Thursday, October 8th, 2020 at 6:01 PM. Members present are Mark McKiever, Kevin Myers, James May, and myself, Ciaran Scherr, and Lisa Lawson.
I wouldn't hear. I love, I wouldn't hear from any of these committee meetings.
Was that the one?
Where, where is it?
Special meeting before and then later?
Okay, you're off the top line.
Here, here, come on here.
I don't see him online.
He read the top line.
I read the top one. That was making sure that everybody knew I was not here. Okay. So, the members present are Mark McKiever, Kevin Myers, James May, and myself, Ciaran Scherr, and Lisa Lawson. Called meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Public participation was none and then ordered committee business. Says committee was called to order at 6:01 PM. It says approval of September, I guess I really don't have to read it while I'm doing it. You don't have to read it, you can just state whatever you want. Yeah, no, but I'd rather read it that way. Verbatim, I have your list, Paul.
If you want me to read it, I can read it as well.
Okay.
So, the Service Committee minutes for October 8th, present, Lisa Lawson, Kevin Myers, Ciaran Scherr, and Bruce Trucca, Chair. Number one, approval of September 17th, 2020 minutes. Following council's special full meeting on, on October 5th, 2020, Sherrod requested amendment of a sentence in the committee's September 17th, 2020 meeting minutes from, Reeser was asked what the extra revenue from water line expansion to Nevada would be used for, and he replied that it would be, that it would go into the Water Department budget for line maintenance and other expenses, end quote. All set made a motion to amend the minutes after sentence read, quote, "Reeser was asked what the extra revenue for one, from water line expansion to Nevada would be used for, and he replied that it would go into the Water Department budget, which is about $4 million, but not presently up to that amount," end quote. Myers seconded the motion which passed by voice vote. At council's special full meeting on October 5th, 2020, Law Director Rob Ratliff requested amendment of a sentence in the committee's September 17th, 2020 meeting minutes from, quote, "Council members who are also landlords are free to vote on legislation pertaining to this issue without it constituting a conflict of interest provided it is a citywide change and not for the direct benefit of those council members." And Me added that he was told the same by state officials. All set made a motion to amend the minutes to replace the sentence with the verbatim transcript specific to the subject. Sherrod seconded the motion which passed by voice vote. Myers made a motion to approve the minutes as amended, but they seconded by Sherrod. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, 2021 OPC, OPWC grant. Engineer Lynn McKiever noted that the city will be applying for a 2020 Ohio Public Works Commission grant for water lines within the city because there is insufficient time to use the funds for water line expansion to the village in Nevada next year. He added that in agreement with Nevada is contingent on council deciding what the water rate structure will be for the village which requested in-city rates. Instead, the 2021 OPWC funds will be used to replace water lines at Ford Street, from Highland Avenue to Whitestone Street and under the Mary Street Bridge. Typically, the city has received $185,000 from the annual OPWC grant with matching funds from the city. Myers made a motion requesting emergency legislation stating the city's intent to sell city water to the village in Nevada at the in-city rate and structure. All set seconded the motion which passed by voice vote. Myers made a motion requesting emergency draft legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application for a 2021 OPWC grant for water line work within the city. All set seconded the motion which passed by voice vote. Myers amended this motion to take out draft, which was seconded by All Set. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, commercial water meters. Mayor Jeff Reeser detailed a proposal to utilize federal CARES Act funds for the purchase of 156 commercial water meters that would allow for remote reading. The estimated cost would be $200,000. It was noted that small businesses in the city are hurting because of the coronavirus pandemic and Reeser noted that once it's determined what relief funds were left over by grant program for small businesses, what we looked at. Myers made a motion requesting emergency legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bid for the installation of commercial water meters in the city. Sherrod seconded the motion which passed by voice vote. Number four, BCO Chapter 915.04, Responsibility for Payment of Charges, Tenant and Property Owner is jointly responsible for payment. On September 17th, the committee requested draft legislation to amend Besire's codified Ordinance 91504A to no longer require landlords to pay water bills that are in a tenant's name. Mark Irwin, 410 Meter Drive, asked if council members who are landlords would be allowed to vote on the legislation. Ratliff responded that he provided committee members with legal guidance on any potential conflicts of interest that is subject to the attorney-client privilege. Myers asked whether two committee members could vote on the matter if the other two members of the committee abstained and Ratliff responded that they could. He added that he was unclear about the constitution veto-proof majority. Reeser contended to note that so amending, BCO 91504, will cause the city's residents through higher water rates. Other possible options for recovery and unpaid bills were discussed. Council President Kirk Tankhouse will contact the Ohio Ethics Commission for an opinion about any potential conflicts of interest concerning... Director to advertise for bid for the installation of commercial water meters in the city. Sharick seconded the motion, which passed by voice vote. Number four, B C O Chapter nine fifteen point zero four, responsibility for payment of charges, tenant and property owner, jointly responsible for payment. On September seventeenth, the committee requested draft legislation to amend Visirus codified ordinance nine fifteen oh four A to no longer require landlords to pay water bills that are in a tenant's name. Lot Irwin, four-ten Meter Drive, asked if council members who are landlords would be allowed to vote on the legislation. Ratliff responded that he provided committee members with legal guidance on any potential conflicts of interest that is subject to the attorney-client privilege. Myers asked whether two committee members could vote on the matter, if the other two members of the committee abstained, and Ratliff responded that they could. He added that he was unclear about the constitution veto proof majority. Reeceur intended to note that so amending B C O nine fifteen oh four would cause the city's residents through higher water rates. Other possible options for recovery and unpaid bills were discussed. Council President Kurt Fankhauser will contact the Ohio Ethics Commission for an opinion about any potential conflicts of interest concerning the draft legislation. Ratliff will look into drafting language that adds the cost of utility checks, a slight in scale, and a minimum age for accounts to the existing codified ordinance, giving the Service Safety Director the authority to set water rates. Gary Harris of Visirus shared some of the problems he's experienced as a landlord related to utilities. Number five, Trufer recessed the Service Committee at seven sixteen P M.
Anybody have any questions for the Service Committee? Okay, moving on, Public Lands and Buildings Committee, Ms. Sharick.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, met from seven seventeen P M to seven thirty-eight P M on a Thursday, October eighth. Members present were Mark McKiever, Bruce Trucco, and myself, and Chair. The first order of business was city parking lots. Mayor Jeff Reeceur suggested evaluating all of the lots to determine which are most in need of repaving and other repairs. He noted that an individual has expressed an interest in purchasing lot three at one sixty-six North Poplar. Auditor Joyce Schiffer observed that her office has received proceeds from the sale of lot number two to Baker's Restaurant, but that nothing has been appropriated. It was noted that the committee prior to the current council term decided against selling lot three, a discussion on pros and cons of selling the city's parking lots. Reeceur said that the city is planning on cleaning and patching lot three in the next few weeks. Second order of business was city hall access. Council President Kurt Fankhauser suggested that ordinance be considered giving all department heads a key to the city hall. Reeceur noted that access is available via the police department during non-working hours. An F O B system was suggested. And then, number three, Sharon Trufer, within Lands, Buildings, at seven thirty-eight.
Anybody have any questions for Public Lands and Buildings?
I do. Did they, did everyone receive the email I did from Brian Rockwell?
Yes.
Okay.
What email?
I don't remember.
Check your email, he sent an email off to everybody.
It went to all of us.
It went to everyone.
I know, but everybody got it. And then, you know, everybody checked it.
My comment is, I do have the key now. I was given the key. Well, good for you.
Good for you.
You can have that responsibility. If you need it, because you want to call a special economic meeting, I can let you in. I'm good. I don't even call it that way. Okay, um, we're gonna move on to Finance Committee, Mr. McKiever.
Yes, Saturday City Council. Finance Committee, met Thursday, October eighth, at seven thirty-eight P M to eight thirty-six P M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Bruce Trucco, James Mead, myself, Chair. And I am not going to read five pages worth of information. I will summarize it. We discussed approval of the September seventeenth minutes, and they were passed. Number two, various appropriations. Auditor Joyce Schiffer explained the following appropriations. There were just three different appropriations, and there was emergency legislation that was passed. We also talked about the victim's advocate, Sam Paulwell. And that's when we had a letter drafted, be signed by council praising Sam tonight. And question was asked about the annual budgeting of the fifty thousand to the Crawford County Partnership, and we responded that thirty thousand has been turned over to them. And number three, we went into a lengthy discussion over ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty twenty with the help of Vicki DeShawn at eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive. She pointed out many corrections that we went and changed on various sections of the ordinance, which is quite lengthy to explain. They're all here and ready. And we had a motion to bring this to the Special Finance Committee meeting, and I adjourned the meeting at eight thirty-six P M.
Anybody have any questions for Finance Committee? Help and Safety Committee, Mr. Myers?
Met on October eighth, at eight thirty-six, eight fifty-seven P M. Members present, Bruce Trucco, Mead, Mark McKiever, myself, as Chair. Item one was the Traffic Control map for Kincora Drive, where what was done by the Planning Commission in two thousand and four and filed with the county in two thousand and five, but was not ever processed through council. Mr. McKiever requested legislation to now accept that, and we passed that by voice vote. Number two was the Traffic Commission, and I do want to point out where it says I suggested disbanding the City Traffic Commission. I would like to ask that we amend that word, because I asked the committee whether they wanted to, and then went on where you say I alterfully suggested something else. So, I don't know what word you guys want to use, but I don't feel I suggested disbanding the Traffic Commission.
Offered.
Or asked the committee if they so wanted to.
I was using one word.
So, I asked the committee if they wanted to disband it, or have someone from the committee sit on there. Also asked about having draft minutes from the Traffic Commission in a timely manner. At any rate, what we got down to at the end of it was asking for legislation, bring Health and Safety Chair on the Traffic Commission, as well as having the council members in me be notified of any ninety-day trials within twenty-four hours of the commission deciding to institute them, and prior to their implementation, that passed by voice vote. Item three, Ms. Sharick inquired about the police department's body camera policy, and there was a little discussion on that, no action taken. And we recessed at eight fifty-seven P M.
Anybody have any questions for Help and Safety Committee? Mr. Fankhauser.
Do you have a comment what that suggested, but that suggested actually came after a whole other conversation where it was brought up, where everybody heard that maybe it should be disbanded, and that's why you asked?
Possibly.
So, I don't know if there's a way to, you know.
Well, these aren't approved yet. They'll get approved Thursday night, right?
Provided that Help and Safety needs on Thursday, they'll be approved, well, they'll be approved the next Thursday.
Any votes of amendment to ask?
We will on Thursday.
You guys can hash out between now and Thursday, what you want to say. Plating Committee, Mr. McKiever?
Yes, Plating Committee, met Thursday, October eighth, from eight fifty-seven P M to nine oh six P M. Approved the September seventeenth and October first, two thousand and twenty minutes. Bruce made a motion to approve the September first, seconded by James Mead. Motion was by, motion passed by voice vote. The October first Plating Committee meeting minutes, Ms. Vicki DeShawn, eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive noted that is suggested amendment. And item number one, where states a lengthy sentence, and we needed to adjust that. There was suggestions on several things to be amended, and the committee, Plating Committee meeting minutes were tabled until they should be amended as detailed above. Number two, the Visirus codified ordinance eleven fifty-seven oh four, newly annexed areas. Rattler provided the committee with a draft ordinance, allowing codified ordinance in question to state that territory which is annexed into the city of Visirus, subsequent to the effective date of this ordinance, shall upon the effective date of the annexation, be zoned into the R E district. And this is what was amended in bold print, unless prior to annexation, a special zoning area designation is requested by the owner of the property to be annexed and is approved by city council as part of the resolution setting for the city services to provide, to provided by the annexate, annexed territory, in quotations. With the changes in boldface, Rattler noted that any further annexations could go faster and smoother with these changes in effect. Mead made a motion, requiring emergency legislation detailed, as detailed above, and the second by Trucco. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, I recessed Plating Committee at nine oh six P M.
Mr. Pratt, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, this is really just a typo, there's a word missing in the boldface between two and provided, there's a B.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I, it didn't, I thought that was missing.
Between now and when Plating meets again, I'll, I'll change that. It is corrected in the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on the Plating? And none. We had a Special Finance Committee meeting Tuesday, October thirteenth, at probably thirty P M. What's your view?
Yes, Special Finance Committee, we met Thursday, October thirteenth, five thirty P M to six thirty-six P M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Bruce Trucco, James Mead, and myself, Chair. This was called by committee members for limited purpose of discussing ordinance twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty. Number two, ordinance dash number twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty, manpower. We went into a lot of discussion. There was corrections made, and about twenty hours in the work week, up to a thousand hours per year. This was for the code enforcement officer. There was other sections that words were changed, instead of single, they were plural, eliminating a title of Access nineteen, and just put access for that service, and other corrections to, grammatic corrections to the ordinance, all the way through section L, from A, from A through section L. Myers made a motion to request emergency legislation to amend and replace ordinance number twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty, with the changes and corrections as detailed above. Me seconded the motion, which passed by voice vote. I asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting, motion by Mead, seconded by Trucco, motion passed by voice vote.
Anybody have any questions on that meeting? No, sir. We had a Special Health and Safety Committee meeting at six thirty tonight, prior to this council meeting.
Health and Safety met in seating from six thirty to six thirty-five P M. For the limited purpose of discussing the purchase of Ambulance and Care Act funds, Mark McKiever made a motion to approve said purchase, seconded by Mead, and that motion passed by voice vote, and I adjourned at six thirty-five P M.
Anybody have any questions on that meeting? Finance had a special meeting right after that, at six forty.
Yes, members present, Kevin Myers, Bruce Trucco, James Mead, and myself, Chair. We discussed the purchase of the ambulance and the appropriations. First, there was a, I'm sorry, write down. Yes, we had a motion to declare emergency for the purchase of the ambulance. Kevin Myers made the motion, James Mead seconded, passed by voice vote, on various appropriations, which were brought by Joyce Schiffer for this, and the various appropriations to declare emergency, and Kevin Myers made the motion, and James Mead seconded, and I made, I adjourned the meeting at six forty four P M.
Anybody have any questions on that meeting? And then, right after that, there was a Service Committee meeting, six fifty P M.
Service Committee, met in special session at six fifty-three P M. It was called by Mayor Reeceur for the limited purpose of discussing an application for the Ohio Public Works Commission. What he had asked for was an amended version of the second draft legislation for a manhole on Reef Street, and various water line projects, as well as a manhole on Poplar, and also on the west side of Washington Square. Kevin made a motion as an emergency, as amended, seconded by C. Aaron Sharick, and motion passed, all in favor. And the Service adjourned at six fifty-eight P M.
Anybody have any questions on that? Traffic Commission report, Mr. Reeceur?
Nothing to report. We have not had a meeting, but I'll entertain traffic questions if you have them.
Is there a meeting scheduled at this point?
No.
If I have any traffic questions?
I don't know if the Traffic Commission actually handles it, though. The downtown lights seem to be very dim, and I've had a few people ask me if they could put brighter bulbs in them, so that they would feel safer.
Yeah, they can address it. Those were lights that were, when they redid the downtown, that was what the committee chose to put in there, to give it more of an old-fashioned look, and that's, yeah, that's
Back in the day, maybe they felt a little safer. It gets dark early now, and I think that's why people have noticed it's getting dark earlier, and they're not.
There was, we had some controversy on it a couple of years ago, but, you know, if you go through, people object to the brighter lights, because like Upper Sandusky and Galleon both have the brighter lights, but they're kind of blinding, you can't see the storefronts. The softer lights give it more of a homey feel, and you can, you can actually see better, you know, with those, with those softer lights. If you just, if you just go to Galleon and Upper Sandusky, it looks like it's an airport. And I think that's what the commission back in two thousand and ten, that's why they decided on those, so.
Mr. McKiever?
I will say, I, I go through at three thirty in the mornings.
So do I.
And I see clearly, when I turn on, when I turn on Fort Charles and go up to the square, I do see clearly down there. I don't see, I don't see any problem, but.
The people were more concerned with walking. I don't think it was, because I do, like you leave early, correct? I'm not even awake. But, yeah, well, you know.
With the height they're at is the problem. If, if they were up above, brighter lighting, it would send them down essentially at an eye level.
That was, that was a committee of, of residents that when they put the design together, chose the old-fashioned lights, just to give it an old-fashioned look, and, you know, they, they didn't want to give it that airport feel.
Yeah, there's not an in-between bulb. You know, like an L E D version.
It could be. To be hon, be honest, those, yeah, to be honest with you, that, we've never had one complaint about that, so.
I've had, like, three people complain to me.
Several people.
From her.
Yeah, we had more complaints when we, when somebody put a few of those in, you know, about taking them out, so, you know, there was somebody, a previous maintenance person put a couple of them years ago, and we had a lot of complaints about those, so, I mean, they're.
I was, they told me the city looked back in danger.
Like it's closed.
Like it's closed for business.
I, I, I don't think that's true.
I'm just telling you what happened.
Yeah, that was the opinion.
As somebody who owns a business downtown, I think it really, those lights are really just perfect for downtown.
The hairdresser's getting off at, you know, six, seven o'clock at night, they're a little nervous about going to their cars, and.
We have no crime problem downtown. We just, we, I don't, I don't know.
Cruz got cameras there, anyway.
We just, we, I don't, we, I mean, I, I don't, we don't, it's not like Cleveland or Columbus or Chicago, and nobody should feel unsafe about going to their cars in Visirus, Ohio. So, if they do, they can call the police and come over and, you know, you know, this is not, this is, this is not, you know. not, this is, this is not, you know.
I've, I've heard some complaints too, and, and this has gone, this has been going on for years, but I was driving through Marysville, and I, I noticed they have similar light posts to what we have with the same color tampon mirrors, but they strung like the big fat Christmas bulbs on a string from every one of their light posts down both sides, and it added more light. Don't know if that's something we can do, but.
Did you notice that they, did they have electric, they're trees there also?
They, they might have. It was night when I drove through.
Sometimes when they, that's what I was, if, when we've talked to ODNR about in the future, they put some trees there, and then they put the electricity there so we can light up the trees, so, you know, that would be, that would certainly be a good option, rather than, you know, because we're, it's, it's a controversial thing, and it's, you go change the lights there, it's, it's not going to be good.
Well, if you just strung another string across, it's not really adding much.
But how are you going to wire those, though?
I'd be more worried about semi-attacking when they're driving through. Well, they all know we're on a sidewalk. They didn't, they didn't cross a road.
So you got to wire them, right now you have to wire them from the post, you have to hotwire them, I guess is what it's called, because we don't have plug-in any there. I don't think there's plug-ins on any of those, so.
You have to get a certified electrician involved to have one.
Yeah, that's going to be kind of expensive, but we can look into, I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
On a different note, on a different note, I was asked about whether or not anybody's looked into having a stop sign at the corner of Poplar and Lucas again by several people. They said that there's a lot of.
No, we, that was brought up, I think, a traffic commission. We've had no accidents there. I mean, we have, we, we don't really, Poplar and Lucas, yeah, we haven't had any issues there, I don't believe that.
I've heard of several accidents, and near misses because of the way that the cars are parked on both sides, and you can't see around there and.
I think the cars are parked. I think, I think the cars are parked legal, I know.
They're legally parked, it's just it makes it really hard to see.
When you have certain areas that have, I mean, we can put a stop sign in, you know, but when you have, when you have, when you have neighborhoods and older neighborhoods and mature trees and, you know.
And that's why they are.
It's not just there, just, there's a lot of that throughout the entire community. You just have to kind of creep out and, you know, make sure nobody's coming, I know, so. There's some issues that you could go around and probably find fifty places like that in the community, you know, to have some visibility issues, so.
Does anybody else have any traffic questions? Hearing none, all agree and disagree. Hearing none, we, I need a motion to accept the committee's report.
I oppose.
Court of City Officer, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, COVID's in the, in the news quite a bit lately. We, I just, on, the governor said we are number nine in the county, I'm sorry, in the state, number nine for cases per hundred thousand. Our cases have gone up exponentially here in the last couple of weeks, and so, as all I want to say is just, you just redouble your efforts, and we got to, we got to really get a grip on this. The cases, most of them are either asymptomatic or mild symptoms, which is good news, but there are about eight percent that are not. So four percent roughly that are moderate symptoms, and four percent are severe symptoms. Our deaths and hospitalizations have creeped up too, so just do, do your part. Just try to, just try to do the things that we've been doing for months, and we'll get through this, so. You can, information, if you're looking for information, Crawford County Public Health website, and their Facebook page is updated every day, and that's a, an excellent site for information about what's going on, so. Bicentennial plans are, you know, obviously the bicentennial's coming, and we put, can, we continue to work on those plans. The first event, kickoff event, is going to be on the afternoon of December thirty-first on the square, where we're going to have a bratwurst drop, and more news later on that. Our Facebook page for the bicentennial and website are up and running, bussiris21.com, and please follow us on Facebook. Lots of things being planned for next year to celebrate our two hundred years of heritage and, as well as legacy projects. So, with that, I'd like to refer the 2021 airports project to the service committee. And that's it.
I want to refer that to the service committee.
I just got one comment real quick, Mr. President. Because Mayor brought up bicentennial, being that I am the person in charge of coordinating the city's fireworks show every year, I did actually meet with fireworks distributor and our fire chief, thank you, Judge Whimley, and we were able to scout out some areas, and there's a very good chance and opportunity that we will move the fireworks to the city for this one-year bicentennial festival.
And that's because we are going to have that weekend, it'll be our Founder's Weekend, Fourth of July Weekend, and we're going to parade and celebrate.
Everybody should be able to be right in the downtown area and sit and enjoy the fireworks show above.
That'll be great. And also thank you, and I, for the coawanus for honoring Dr. Wetter with the tree planting and.
It was our pleasure.
Very nice, and, yeah, even the rain didn't stop anything, so.
Not for Doc.
Depending on how this coronavirus gets going here in the middle of winter, if it keeps trending in the wrong direction, do we have any possibility of this jeopardizing bicentennial celebration?
Well, of course it is going to all depend on, we were originally going to kick off the, this celebration with a, a party on twelve-thirty, and we pushed that back for a year to a closing party, and then have this event on the thirty-first on the square, which will have the family celebrations. And, and of course, it's all going to depend on COVID, and we have things during the year, and hopefully by that time they'll have more things under control, at least with a vaccination or, you know, community, you know, the current herd immunity, and hopefully by that time we will be seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, so, but everything will be reevaluated as, as needed, so. But right now, though, we're, we're planning to go full speed ahead.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for the mayor? Hearing none, service committee report.
Service director is, I've got that.
Service director.
Yeah. Group one, two, and three A sewer projects are winding down. There's a very small punch list of items to be finished. The 2020 Mill and Pave project should be finishing up in the next two weeks. The Friendship Bridge, we had a couple of things going on there. We had an erosion issue that was, has been fixed. If you bend out that way, you'll see it's, looks pretty good. Bridge is currently closed for some much-needed maintenance, and for those that have walked on that bridge in the past, I think when you walk on it now, you're going to see a huge difference, and that should be open here hopefully next week. There was, the repairs were a little more extensive than we thought. We had an issue with the catwalk at the reservoir here a little while back. There's some of the grates, wooden grates have been, had fallen through. We had, we put a gate up. There was a, a chain that was there, it's a keep-out, well, that got thrown away by somebody, so now we think we've got a pretty good solution there before we get everything repaired. The Pine Reservoir Survey was completed by Branson and Carroll and is being sent to ODNR, and we are now waiting for them to do the inspection and give us their final approval. Leaf pickup, it says here the leaf pickup starts the beginning of November, but I know our crews are out already picking up some leaves. Some of these trees have really come down hot and heavy with the rain that we've had here, but if you have leaves now, you can take them to the compost site. That's going to be open Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays from eight to two, or, or you can give a call to City Hall, that we'll, we can make sure we get over, and if you can't get to the compost site, we can pick it up for you. Garbage pickup, it's not too early to start talking about that for the weekend of Thanksgiving. The Thursday garbage will be picked up on Wednesday, that's the day prior to Thanksgiving, and then the day after Thanksgiving, if you're on the Friday route, that's going to be picked up on Monday, just like every other year. And trick or treat is coming up, socially distance and all that stuff. It's coming up next Saturday from two to four. And that's all for Jeff's report.
Is there a rain date already established for that?
No, no, it's going to be rain or shine.
Okay.
Want to scoop that out?
I'm getting canceled this year because of COVID.
The leaf pickup was by the house today. And my wife doesn't put them in the street.
Put them on the tree line, right, yeah. That's where you're supposed to put them.
And that's what she did. She knows that. The neighbors, they put them down in the street. Well, they passed hers up, and they picked the ones up that was out in the street, and she wasn't living.
They don't know how that happened. What, what is your address?
Eight seventy-three West Perry.
West Murray?
West Perry.
Eight seventy-three West Perry, okay.
Maybe they were just trying to get all the ones out of the street they could for rain.
I don't know. Did you say something to them?
I, that's what I was just saying. It's really what you thought, Kevin, was my thought, with it being raining. I mean, I'm not saying that they did it deliberately, but if I would get the ones out of the street first, because they're going to clog up the drains, which is going to flood the streets.
Yeah, but they.
Shame on the person that put them out in the street. If I was your wife, I'd have went down and yelled at them.
Yeah. Please don't put your leaves out in the street. Do not do that. So, yeah, I don't know, but that's, if they're going like by.
We had that discussion for thirty minutes, you know, so.
We're bringing this up tonight.
Yeah, I'll ask Jeff tomorrow about it, so.
Otherwise, she should have called her councilman.
It's good to have a sense of humor.
She did, but I didn't get the voice out of that.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Any other questions for service director's report? Brad left for the law director's report.
Hey, Mr. President. Quickly, we are still seeking bids for the demo on the Licky Street property. We've got one, we'll try to get two more before we make a decision. We've been approached by Operation Hope with respect to the Licky Street property. They have a program in place with local building trade school and some grants. They believe that they can take that project on, get the house rehab, and get it back into usable format, so that, that house is already with CIC, so we're going to have to put in the CIC, but if we can get that deal worked out, if we can get that back in, in operation, that'll certainly be beneficial. Maybe we won't have to pay the tear down, or maybe especially. Oh, and congratulations, everybody, you may be Sires bigger. The organization is now done, and so the Alsmist Place is now in the Sires City limits.
Yay.
Yay.
Well, there are, there's a project in place, hopefully.
Is the Mary Street House in the CIC that gets sold?
Actually, I'm the secretary of the CIC who was discussing with the owner on, I knew that one.
Is the Mary Street that they got not sold yet?
Anyone looking at me for?
Because. No, the secretary of the CIC was communicating with you.
Oh, well, I made the communication and turned it back to you, so if they have a contact with you, then I gave you the last of the contact.
Right, that was, that was the last I heard.
The reason that they're held up on, I'll be honest with you guys, they're just worried about conflict of interest, because the one person, the person that visitors want, that wants to buy it, wants to use an alternative financing to buy it, and the alternative financing he wants to use is a friend of his, and while his friend happens to be a city employee, so that's where we're running into some issues on whether or not that can be a problem because of conflict of interest. So, it is what it is, so either they'll be able to buy it or they won't, but unfortunately, because of that conflict of interest issue, that's where I've left it with Mr. Ray.
So, so we will, we'll call a CIC meeting probably early next week so that we can move forward with at least getting invested and entertain other.
It's still a good structure. It's, I mean, somebody can buy that and turn it into a piece what's there or whatever, but, yeah, unfortunately.
Any other questions for law director? Do we have an update on the court case on West Seven Street property?
We have a deadline to file briefs and memorandum of support, November first, I believe, with County Police Courts, and then it'll be set for a year and sometime after that.
Let the public know which address it's at.
It's eleven sixty West, so that was a property that we demolished last year.
The Crowder Road farm plant, any update on the.
Yes, we've identified those sources by, the, an agreement was made to allow the product that was currently on, to be able to be removed so that it didn't spoil or otherwise damage, and, and present moment, it remains a matter of, I don't think criminal investigation.
Okay, any other last questions for law director? Moving on, auditor, we have a report here.
Yes, she has a small report here. These are referrals to the finance committee. An appropriation is needed to the seven fifty solidage upon the slice seventy-five fifteen solid waste management, like twenty-one personal services to cover salaries and benefits for the greater of the year. I will have the numbers on Thursday. Any other proprietary matters to that will have to refer to the finance committee.
Need a motion to refer this to finance to the. And then this statement of cash. Yes, this is the first time we've seen.
That has to be accepted by.
Okay, new motion accepted by. Treasurers' force. That's a, they're triggering. Medicine's chief of court, and fire chief of court. So we need a motion to accept the city's officers' reports. Go to. On paper. I oppose. Visitors input regarding, regarding reports of standing slash special committees and city officers. Is there any visitors that want to give their, or a justice counsel, please state your name and address and place?
Vicki Deschamps, eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive. I have questions on three separate committee reports. The first one is the October eighth, twenty twenty plating committee report, page one of two. Item number one states approval of September seventeen, October one, twenty twenty minutes. Truca made a motion to approve in September one, twenty twenty, plating committee meeting minutes with a second by me, that should state September seventeen rather than September one.
Okay, any others?
Yes. The next is the October eighth, twenty twenty finance committee report, page two of five, number three, line six says the following, or line six, I start reading. Deschamps further noted that section three of the ordinance states that all hourly paid full-time single employees other than the service safety director shall be paid compensation of time and one half for hours exceeding forty hours a week, and questioned why references made to the service safety director in section three when the position is salaried. Deschamps further noted that section two states that the service safety director is paid biweekly with no overtime, flex time, or compensatory time, even though the position is salaried. Deschamps, Deschamps suggested that mention of the service safety director in these parts of section two and three is not necessary since it's a salary position, but that it But that if Council Feels mention should be made, then other salaried employees should be included as well. First off, what I said was that Deschamps suggested that mention of the Service Safety Director in section three, not sections two and three, just section three, is not necessary, since it's a salaried position. And just in reading here, let's see. I didn't state where it says, Deschamps further noted that section two states that the Service Safety Director is paid bi-weekly with no overtime, flex time, or compensatory time, even though the position is salaried, I never stated even though the position is salaried. I just said forth that section two says there's no overtime, so why would you make reference to him in section three? So, I'm asking for the verbiage, even though the position is salaried, be stricken. And then where it says, Deschamps suggested that mention of the Service Safety Director in section three. So we wanna cross out the words and these parts of two.
This part is section three?
I wanted to say, Deschamps suggested that mention of the Service Safety Director in section three is not necessary, since it's a salaried position.
Okay, was that third thing or?
Oh, no.
Second.
Then, line fifteen states under, I agree, line fifteen says, Council President Kirk Bankhauser suggested that in section two, subsection J is titled Access Nineteen and should be changed to Access. He did not state subsection J, he said subsection I, and that is, his statement was correct. And I might add that all these corrections that I'm bringing up can be confirmed by just listening to the audio recording. Line twenty-seven, Deschamps asked why the first paragraph of section five wasn't changed from stating that unless otherwise specifically designated in the current collective bargaining contracts for the department with which a city employee is connected, forty hours shall be granted to all employees regularly scheduled to work twenty-nine or more hours per week. That is not what I said. I said, Deschamps asked why the first paragraph of section five was it changed from stating that unless otherwise specifically designated in the current collective bargaining contracts for the department with which a city employee is connected, forty hours shall constitute the basic work period for compensation purposes. So in other words, on page three of five, the first sentence and the first two words of the second sentence need to be stricken, and you state shall constitute the basic work week for compensation purposes.
Is there more?
Yes, line thirteen. Deschamps further noted, this is also on page three, five, first paragraph, line thirteen. Deschamps further noted that the last sentence in section five states that the work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the Law Director as needed not to exceed twenty-eight hours in any week, although in previous drafts of the ordinance, as well as ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand nineteen, the last sentence in section five states that the work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the Law Director as needed not to exceed twenty-eight hours in any week or one thousand hours a year. The verbiage or one thousand hours a year is not what I said, I said or one thousand hours in a year. Line twenty of that same page. Some committee members asked that the last paragraph of section five be changed to state that the work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the Law Director as needed not to exceed twenty-eight hours in any week or one thousand hours a year. What the committee said was the one thousand hours need to be put back in.
Is there more?
Yep, page four of five, line fourteen. Deschamps suggested that changes made to the current draft manpower ordinance constitute a violation of the State's Open Meetings Act. What was not included in that statement was my comment of when those changes have not been discussed and approved in an open meeting. So line fourteen needs to state, Deschamps suggested that changes made to the current draft manpower ordinance constitute a violation of the State's Open Meetings Act when those changes have not been discussed and approved in an open meeting.
Okay, is there anything else?
Not one, the October eight Finance Committee Report, I'm done with that one.
Well, we haven't proved these minutes yet, so they'll have time to make any changes between now.
That's fine.
Every day.
Next is the October thirteen, twenty twenty Special Finance Committee. And again, these comments that I'm making will all be confirmed by listening to the audio recording of that meeting. Page one of two, number two, A. The last sentence in section five was changed to state, the work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the Law Director as needed not to exceed twenty-eight hours in any week or up to one thousand hours per year. That verbiage of or up to one thousand hours per year is not correct. The verbiage should read or one thousand hours in a year.
Is there any other comments?
Yes, F. In section two, subsection E, which was corrected to D, the city engineer was added. When I brought this to the attention of the Finance Committee, on more than one occasion, I stated part-time city engineer. If you will go back and look at the manpower ordinances that dealt with the Service Safety Director, the city engineer, and the supervisors, it all refers to the engineer as part-time.
So we should put part-time in front of city engineer?
Is he now a full-time employee?
Well, I think he's a contractor, he's not even that old, he's got a current half.
Okay. And I will be pointing it out later tonight, but from what I can recall, as far back as nineteen ninety-nine, when the uh Service Safety Director, supervisors, and the part-time city engineer were all encompassed in with the manpower ordinance for the non-union employees, when we were all together, it was always part-time city engineer. And then when we separated and took those people away from the one manpower ordinance, we did that, I believe, in two thousand fourteen, and made an ordinance separate for Service Safety Director, Engineer, and the department heads or supervisors, it still was listed as part-time city engineer. I really don't wanna bring this up, but I have noticed that in the bill it, it just says city engineer, it doesn't state part-time, but. Anyhow, that change, um, I mean, we need to have part-time.
Is that it?
Um, yeah, for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Is there any other visitors that want to comment on the standing or special committee report? Do we need recess? Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Uh, yes, we have nine pieces of legislation, we have five ordinances and four resolutions. Ordinance number thirty-six, twenty twenty, amending and supplementing ordinance number sixty-five, twenty nineteen, being the annual appropriation ordinance for twenty twenty. By appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of three thousand dollars to the contractual services line item within the police department category within the programs, one, security persons or property sub-paragraph. By appropriating from unappropriating, unappropriating twenty twenty Ohio crime victims assistance grant funds, the sum of three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents to the personal services line item within the victim advocate category within the twenty twenty Ohio crime victims assistance grant sub-paragraph. Further appropriating, unappropriating twenty twenty-one Ohio crime victims assistance grant funds, the sum of two thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-seven cents to the personal services line item within the victim advocate category within the twenty twenty-one Ohio crime assistance grant sub-paragraph. Further appropriating and unappropriating derelict building liability funds, the sum of twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to the other uses line item within the private department category within the derelict building liability sub-paragraph. And finally appropriating from unappropriated coronavirus relief fund funds, the sum of four hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents to the materials and supplies line item within the general government category within the coronavirus relief fund sub-paragraph, and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Finance Committee. Ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty twenty, amending and supplementing section one one five seven point zero four of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Plating Committee. Ordinance number thirty-eight, twenty twenty, an ordinance meaning the traffic control map and file established by ordinance twenty-seven, seventy-eight, and sections three zero five point oh one, three oh five point oh two, and three oh five point oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, by accepting the street plan dedication filed by former Mayor Dan Ross on the number four, two thousand and five. That's referred to the Health and Safety Committee. Ordinance number thirty-nine, twenty twenty, an ordinance submitting and supplementing sections three oh seven point oh one and three oh seven point oh three of chapter three oh seven, Traffic Commission, duties of police and service safety director, Title One, Administration of Part Three, Traffic Code, of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Health and Safety Committee. Ordinance number forty, twenty twenty, an ordinance submitting and replacing ordinance number twenty-five, twenty twenty, which in turn was an ordinance repeatedly, and replacing ordinance numbers twenty-six, twenty nineteen, and fifteen, twenty seventeen, establishing the compensation and human resource staffing sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation and human resource staffing sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio retroactive to January one, twenty twenty, and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Finance Committee. Resolution number two thirty-four, twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing and directing the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director to enter into negotiations for the sale of water to the village of Nevada and to coordinate grant applications for the extension of city water service to the village of Nevada and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the Service Committee. Resolution number two thirty-five, twenty twenty, and the caption and second whereas were amended by the Service Committee in a special meeting prior to this meeting, a um resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bussaras to prepare and submit an application for a twenty twenty-one Ohio Public Works Commission grant for various waterline projects and manhole on Reed Street, manhole on Popo Street, and West Mansfield Street, and a catch basin at Washington Square, and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Service Committee. Resolution number two thirty-six, twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing and directing the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars with the lowest and best bidder or pitters for the installation of one hundred and fifty-six commercial water meters in the city of Bussaras, and finally authorizing and directing the Bussaras City Auditor to draw warrants and warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, and declaring an emergency, that's referred to the Service Committee. And finally, resolution number two thirty-seven, twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing and directing the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to enter into a contract or contracts with fund, peafund superior sales not to exceed the amount of the Caris Act relief funds for the purchase of an ambulance and declaring an emergency. And that is referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Need a motion to accept those, the first three, second. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Those are referred back to the Judiciary Committee. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Please state your name, address, come to the board.
Vicki Deschamps, eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive. I have corrections to two ordinances. Ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty, which deals with amending the traffic control map. Where it says be it resolved, that should state be it ordained. And then down at the bottom, where it has past this blank day of blank two thousand nineteen, that should say twenty twenty. And where it says approved, this blank day of blank two thousand nineteen, that should state twenty twenty.
Okay, do we wanna have a motion to make those?
Show no.
Second. On paper.
Aye.
Opposed. I think we were just gonna have a first reading on that anyways. Uh, is there any others?
I'm not on ordinance thirty-eight, twenty twenty. Next, I have corrections to ordinance number forty, twenty twenty, which is establishing the compensation and human resource staffing sick leave and vacation of employees at various departments of the city of Bussaras, Ohio. Page two of thirteen. Letter D, Service Safety Director, we go down, we have city engineer. Include part-time after city engineer in parenthesis.
So put part-time in parentheses after city engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
And I also note, um, the copy that I printed off for your website, you have men and max, and you have question marks as far as amounts.
Yes, that was an earlier version, that was updated this afternoon. Um, in console with the Law Director and the Service Safety Director, we don't presently have a city engineer, and I was requested to either leave it blank or put in a TBD. Uh, the version you have now here in front of you has nothing, no numbers remaining next.
So when did you amend this? Or when did you have this discussion, because I went to the website?
I, I updated this at two thirty this afternoon.
Okay, um, under letter F, where it says Recreation Department, did you update it and remove the letter G?
No, that was the only change I made.
All right, well then you need to remove the small letter G.
Well, I think there may be.
We have no G.
There may be a footnote missing, I think um, A, B's, if you look at page three of thirteen after letter I, well, maintenance, in uh ten-point type, uh you see A, B, C, D, E, F, there is no G, I'm pretty sure there should be a G there, and I do not have this supporting, but I, um, I think there should be a footnote for uh G, it is missing.
Which page are you on?
Uh, page two and three.
Two and three.
Under effort, race department, there's a lowercase g that occurs in the footnote at the end of this uh section, section two. And if you go to page three of thirteen, at the end of section two, you have the footnotes A through F, and there is no G, I believe there should be a G. Uh, I do not know if I have G's in there.
For the basically question mark next to it.
Maybe we should just hold this at first reading and make all these changes so that it's all in black and white and perfect.
Yeah.
So that we're not voting on amended emergency legislation. I mean, it's already out of compliance anyway, what's another meeting?
I feel better voting on things that are correct.
Okay, uh, is there anything else at this bit?
Yes. Page five of thirteen. Line five. The work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the law director as needed, not to exceed twenty-eight hours in any week or up to one thousand hours per year. That should state or one thousand hours in a year.
Okay, is there anything else?
Page nine of thirteen. Line two starts out with of ten periods of thirty years, of is to be or.
Uh, where are you at?
Second line now.
Page nine of thirteen, line two.
Or instead of.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Does everybody feel like we should get another verdict that is made up for a second reading?
Correctly.
Is there any other public, uh, comment on the first readings? Yeah, I was, uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Trucco. Yeah, resolution two-thirty-four dash twenty-twenty. Uh, it's the first line after the caption. It says, whereas the city of Bussaras decides, desires to ex- extend its water service. I would say it's probably to expand its water service.
I would think that that is right. Or what you said is right. And that needs to pass tonight, so we should, we need a motion to, uh, add that.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Anything else? Anybody's got the, in the first reading stuff? Commendary reports on pending legislation. Finance committee.
Finance is favorable to ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty-twenty with various appropriations. Plating is favorable to ordinance thirty-seven, twenty-twenty for the Bussaras codified ordinance eleven fifty-seven point oh four for newly annexed areas. And that's all I have.
Health and safety.
Health and safety. Health and safety is favorable to ordinance thirty-eight, twenty-twenty, traffic control map working core drive. Health and safety is favorable to ordinance thirty-nine, twenty-twenty, Bussaras codified ordinance, chapters three-o-seven Traffic Commission. And health and safety is favorable to resolution two-thirty-seven, twenty-twenty, ambulance purchase.
Would that be as amended for like the first couple?
Two-thirty-four.
Yes, that two-thirty-four serves, that serves.
Where?
Third, thirty-eight.
Oh, it's on the back here.
I'm still looking for it.
It's on the next page. Okay, uh, service committee.
I, I got a question. Resolution two-thirty-four dash twenty-twenty. Okay, we, we amended it. But then on section one, it talks about bulk water rate. We were just selling water at in-town water rates, but then it would conclusively become a bulk water rate, but we didn't necessarily mention it in my committee as selling it as a bulk water rate. It would just, it would just fall into that category because of the, the amount of water they were purchasing. So, not real sure how, it's nothing that we discussed. It is. We were, we're, we're actually selling water to Nevada at the in-town water rate.
Period.
But when, uh, period.
Okay.
But when they actually purchased water in great amounts, then they fall into the category of purchasing at just like
Just like an.
the lot, the lot line going to North Robinson that we sell to the county.
We sell it at bulk rate.
It, but it was mentioned that it would be the in-town rate and because it would be in a, a
It says in town.
It says in town.
Says at the in-town, at the regular in-town bulk water rate. That's what we're gonna be selling to the county.
It says to enter into negotiations for the sale of bulk water to the village of Nevada at the regular in-town bulk of water.
Could it say in-town water rate?
By default, it becomes. By default, it becomes the bulk rate.
Because they're using so much.
They're using so much.
Right. But we're selling it at the regular in-town rate. We wouldn't, that'd be.
No, we're selling it at the regular in-town bulk water rate. But I can sell it the regular in-town rate.
You pointed out that it's the regular rate and because it's in a bulk amount, it will fall into the bulk category, but it's that in-town rate. So now you're, you're twisting that into its regular bulk water rate.
Well, they're never gonna use less than the bulk amount. They're always gonna use it. So whether that's in there or not, I don't think it makes a difference.
No, yeah, I mean, you can, you can take out bulk to, to most places.
We, we even had a discussion if you remember, Mayor Reser.
Sure, whatever, whatever was legally.
It was fine saying the sale of bulk water at the regular in-town rate.
You know, yeah, but Kurt was right there and then whatever, you know, law director would, would recommend there, I think, would be.
Yeah, you can take bulk out, put it places, it doesn't, it doesn't change.
Why don't we muddy the water on this? I don't know. It's up to the committee.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can take bulk out. It makes no change to, to it. Put bulk in so that it was clear
All right.
that, that we were not selling at, at the individual rate.
Okay, we'll just leave it.
I, I believe that's.
We'll just leave it as it is.
Yeah, I think that's what they requested. I think this be a village of Nevada wanted to make sure that they would get the bulk.
Okay.
It's, it's just more black and white for them to know what they're gonna be following.
Obviously protects them.
That, that, that protects them.
Cause if we didn't have it in there, they might come to us and say, oh, are you gonna sell it at the regular rate for non-bulk or something and then it just confuses everything.
I just don't remember actually.
Yeah, no, and you can take bulk out and just put it at the regular in-town rate.
I, I guess what I would like to do just right now to make it legal is make it, what's the committee say? I mean, I need a motion and a second to put the bulk in and, and that way.
Or take the bulk out.
Or take the bulk out. Yeah, because it wasn't in the order.
Okay, Kevin.
I don't, well, I, I do know that what we discuss as a committee does not have the word bulk there.
That's what I was.
So that's what we requested. Um, unless you can say that there's a really good reason that it should be in there, that I say we amended to take it out because that's what the committee asked for.
Yeah, you, you said that it fell into bulk no matter what. We didn't have to have that word in there. I mean, that was,
That's fine.
that was full conversation.
Yeah, we're arguing with players here. I, we're, they get the same number, but.
Same number. I just don't wanna do it.
I'll move to amend removing the word bulk water.
Okay, I got.
I'll second.
Second, like, long fair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, one has unanimously to remove the, the word bulk that we really didn't mention or talk about, but it, it falls in to by default by the amount of water they will be purchasing. Okay, and so that will be amended as well. Uh, so service is favorable to that. And resolution two-thirty-five dash twenty-twenty, uh, that's, uh, Ohio Public Works Commission, uh, for assistance to, uh, put a manhole, uh, and, uh, on Reed Street and for a manhole on Washington Square and, uh, whatever, something else. And what?
Hops.
And hops, okay. And service is, uh, favorable to resolution two-thirty-six dash twenty-twenty and, um, commercial water meters, uh, we're gonna purchase commercial water meters, up to a hundred and fifty-six commercial water meters for the city. And service is favorable to that.
Okay, and we can set those reports. So moved.
Thank you.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-twenty, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Okay.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-six, twenty-twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-twenty?
McKeeber.
Yes.
Me. Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty-twenty is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Foote.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-seven, twenty-twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty?
So moved. Second.
Foote. McKeeber.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty duly adopted. Uh, traffic control map thirty-eight, twenty-twenty was not requested as emergency. So moving on to the thirty-nine, twenty-twenty, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Myers.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty is duly adopted. Uh, manpower, we were gonna hold that for a first reading since that wasn't a problem. Uh, for the second and third reading of proposed resolution number two-thirty-four dash twenty-twenty, as amended, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Sherrod.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
Resolution number two-thirty-four, twenty-twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two-thirty-four dash twenty-twenty as amended?
So moved. Second.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Resolution number two-twenty, two-thirty-four dash twenty-twenty is duly adopted as amended. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two-thirty-five dash twenty-twenty is amended, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
All set.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote. McKeeber.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Resolution number two-thirty-five, twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two-thirty-five dash twenty-twenty as amended?
So moved. Second.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Resolution two-thirty-five dash twenty-twenty is duly adopted as amended. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two-thirty-six dash twenty-twenty, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Foote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Resolution number two-thirty-six, twenty-twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two-thirty-six dash twenty-twenty?
So moved. Second.
Foote.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Resolution number two-thirty-six dash twenty-twenty is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two-thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeeber, I'm sorry, uh, Myers.
Yes.
Foote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Resolution number two-thirty-seven, twenty-twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two-thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty?
So moved. Second.
Myers.
Yes.
McKeeber.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trucco.
Yes.
Sherrod.
Yes.
Foote. Sherrod. All set.
Yes.
Resolution two-thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty is duly adopted. New miscellaneous business, there's a special findings committee tomorrow at four-thirty in council chambers. I think that's on the budget, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Public hearing on Rivers Street rezoning is October twenty-seventh, six P M. Council members trick-or-treat October thirty-first, two P M. With no backup date yet on that.
Cause they bring the shine.
What's that?
Rain, shine.
Rain, oh, it's gonna happen rain or shine.
In Milwaukee.
Election Day, November third. Don't forget to vote. November eleventh, Veterans Day, city all schools are closed. Does anybody else have any new legislation? Mr. Trucco.
Uh, while it's fresh in everybody's mind, um, I'd like to have the bill of deferred finance for Thursday.
He's fixing the part-time thing.
Yes, sir.[1700.72]
Okay.
My goodness, there was Mr. Chalanowicz. Thank you, I know I wasn't saying it right. Would like to refer to plating, I believe, about the zoning notifications that are given to people. Is that plating, would that be where I could go?
We can refer, they, they did make some changes down there on how they handle stuff since he addressed this one.
Maybe we can discuss that so that we know what the changes are and what changes are. And also, I'm concerned with that email that we received from Brian Rockwell, so I don't know where that went though, but.
The parking lot?
Yeah, we did discuss.
It says already.
Okay.
And they actually declared it, that's why he said, he said they have the cleaners by their.
We did not get an email from Brian Rockwell, so.
Just council members did, I believe.
Okay.
That's why I asked if everybody get excited.
He was concerned about.
And not everybody has time.
Cleaning, right, okay, so.
We need a second. Planning.
We're gonna strike, we're gonna clean, yeah.
All opposed? This is a question, who did refer the bill?
That was a.
And who seconded that? And who did the first on the building permits procedure?
She did. And I did second.
And then I wanna make the referral.
Bruce, Bruce, Bruce here. Well, I'd like to follow up with what Lisa had said. You know, if, if there is a maintenance problem on causing property damage to area businesses, I think we maybe ought to refer to that, Mr. Rockwell's.
Yeah, I think he feels like the ball's been dropped.
Public lands and buildings because he does refer to some of the damages that are being caused by some of our property.
Damage caused to his property from our parking lot.
Can you invite him to our committee meetings on Thursday night?
I respond.
Brian Rockwell from the Brady Dogs.
I can, I can text him. I've talked to him pretty regularly. I'll ask him if he wants to come, he might, I don't know, I haven't even seen the email.
While you're at it, go ahead and invite Mr. Ridgeway.
I just assumed you got it, I didn't know.
And invite Mr. Ridgeway, so I think he would follow into that same conversation.
What about zoning administrator, do we want him here Thursday for the plating?
Landon.
Potential.
He's awful.
The reality is, I mean, if, if they've already made changes, then I don't know if we need him here unless he's willing to explain those changes.
Yeah, I don't know what they are.
I mean, you apparently know what they are.
They, so now, just refresh everybody, Mr. Chakanowitz asked us to address private easements being right on property lines or just in general, because the way our building permits were issued, they did not take into account any private easements at all that anybody might have on any property. So the change that, and I talked to Mr. Ratliff and Landon, and right now they have another line on all the building permits that the applicant has to sign off on that says, they have to initial it, that says that they are.
Free and clear of easements.
Aware of any easements that may legally impact the ability of this permit to be issued. So that is on there, as far as I know, every applicant is having to check that box now, which I think it takes a liability off the city as far as it's putting that liability back on that person to check the box.
Absolutely.
So that's all I know right now.
That sounds like a good start, I mean, put the owners where it needs to be.
But what, back to the, the public lands of building, you wanted to refer the property damage to that?
Yeah, just so we can, you know, learn about it, talk about it, find out about it.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Mr. President, I'm just unclear on what, the property damage to what?
Brian Rockwell's building.
The Weaver Building.
He says that he has basement wall damage due to water coming from our parking lot.
Okay, need a vote, all favor sent out to committee.
Aye.
All opposed? Does anybody else got any other new business, that you mean?
Should we dress lighting or not, I'm kind of, because I have numerous complaints.
The street lighting?
Yeah.
That's open project.
It is an open project?
Um, I'll, street lighting.
What they were talking about earlier?
Up and down.
The downtown lighting?
Oh, traffic signals.
No, the lights, the post lights.
Would that be posed in the building?
Yes. There.
They're called the council.
Call it a safety, I don't know.
I don't know.
What, what do the streetlights hold?
They're safety, they're a danger. Right.
Street lighting, it's helping safety. We'll take it. Uh, new motion then to put that in, that's the reality of the. Any second.
Second, for the, the lighting to go into the health and safety.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody else having their own new business?
I got some, I got a referral, something that we've talked about ever since I've been on council and that I believe we were even starting the process of when I came on council and it's just been thrown out, out the window and that is, get rid of this paper.
You mean go back to the tablets?
No.
Well.
And I even think maybe even go into audio only minutes with just an outline, paper copy would be a better idea too, so that way we're not having all these issues with us getting incorrect minutes and approving them.
Now, I do agree with the audio minutes.
Mr. President, I mean, this, I think.
Todd's working on something with that.
This is probably a discussion for Thursday, not here.
I just wanna put it in committee.
Would it be finance? If we're talking about, well, all the councils are financing.
Finance to approve the money and then.
Well, that would be a preparation, but.
Rules would be financed.
Yeah. So it would be, well, we're only talking about council rules.
Rules and procedures.
The ad hoc committee.
That's.
And that was two referrals too, by the way, that was.
Was that committee still open?
It is, we left it in place.
That probably would be best for the ad hoc committee or the council rules and procedures.
Well, that's, we'll have to advertise then that there's a special meeting for that.
That's fine.
Okay. Does anybody else got anything?
I don't think, we didn't refer that, that was two referrals.
Well, it's all the committees, the special committees, the ad hoc committees still.
That is two referrals, so I have one for the tablets and then one.
Was the same thing, isn't it?
The tablets would probably need to go to finance unless you waited to see what the ad hoc committee says and then send it to finance.
So what, what I had Todd start doing on COVID hit, before all the packet, it was just one big printed off document, well, it was just a bunch of documents thrown together and then scanned and back in, and it was losing picture quality. What he's doing now is, instead of printing them off, he's using Adobe something and he can keep them in their original format and keep one big hundred page long if the packet was that long. And it'll keep the quality there and I, I think that will help tablets. I mean, I don't.
Reality is, the reason I bring up the tablet, the paper is, is I just looked up in my spare bedroom last night and I have four and a half banker's boxes full of paper.
Well, if you wanna, if you got your own tablet, you're welcome to bring it, start viewing it on there, but if you want the city to buy you a tablet, I mean.
I, we already have tablets. We have tablets. They're antiquated, to this point, we checked them out. Well, the fact we bought them and never used them, that's just a great idea.
Well, we did use them a little bit.
Yeah, my predecessor bought those and they were used briefly, it was an issue where some council members, this was before I was here, but I was saying where the press was at the time, some members of council used them, some didn't, some referred to use them, some didn't. Ultimately, it was one member of council who used them and.
I just think when we're talking about money and budgets, I mean, we save a lot of money in papers that we're talking about.
The, the paper actually doesn't cost as much as you might think, but it does add up. The, the tablets we do have, they have to either be upgraded or replaced, but again, it's a discussion if some members want to use tablets and some don't, we probably would have the discussion, should, should we all be using paper, should we all be using tablets? Because in that case, there's gonna be members of council who don't wanna do or the other. Can we do both? That's a discussion we need to have. That's one. Two on the minutes, I am in consultation with a software, this relates to Thursday, but we're on the topic. Voice recognition software, it's been an issue that I've been involved with for decades, it's been either nonexistent or terrible. There is a software program now that is much better. I didn't get back, I didn't hear back to them until today, I'm gonna do a demo with them and if that is satisfactory, what I would like to do with council sort of approval is we will have, as we do now, we'll have a cover sheet mentioning health and safety, talk about A B and C and the motions for this and what was that. Attached to that is, would be a verbatim transcript of everything that occurred in that committee meeting, that would be part of the permanent record. Now, we're not necessarily got to read that in the committee, we can read the cover sheet because the, like the finance meeting we had two weeks ago, that was a five page, that'd be probably thirty pages in type. I don't think anyone wants to sit here and read thirty pages out loud, but when we have anybody on council or in the public who has an issue with anything that is in the minutes, the verbatim transcript is there. Now, secondly, the audio recording is there, the audio recording is a verbatim transcript, it's available on the website to anybody who wants to look at it. To my knowledge, the only people in this city who look at it are Mr. Fankhauser and Ms. Tishaw. That is available for everybody to look at and read and listen to at their convenience, but I think for the purpose of ease for everybody on council, we should have a written transcript as well. The way the minutes are, the way the minutes are written, are written now by myself is they're not verbatim. I just, I try my best to summarize what everybody said in the committee meeting and what they said in public, and it's not verbatim, and my emphasis is my emphasis and my emphasis may not be somebody else's emphasis. So there's always gonna be discrepancies like that.
I think you did a wonderful job with that, Doug.
By having a verbatim transcript attached as a part of the permanent record, I think that solves a lot of that, that issue.
Well, in these minutes, this is probably more than half of Todd's time.
It's more than half, and that's fine, that's my job.
Doing these minutes all the time.
That's, that's my job, that's fine. Decades ago, not even decades ago, years ago, the council minutes were very brief and I've had this, I've mentioned this to some council members, I'm asked to do research into something and I, you know, street lights on Broadway or something, Jeff, don't ask me to look it up and see what they said in nineteen ninety-nine, oh, I looked it up in nineteen ninety-nine, council discussed or the committee discussed, street lights on Broadway. So it's not any help to me or anyone else in the city when minutes are that big.
Well, we, we can get into detail in discussion on a special ad hoc committee, but as far as the tab or the committee, uh, what committee would that be financed? Want to refer that, Doug?
Well, I think it would be financed if we have to spend money and then it's beyond, you know.
Yeah, so start with the ad hoc committee.
We're just, we're just kinda throwing it in the ad hoc because it's all kinda the same.
Fine.
But, but I, I know Bruce, like Bruce, he doesn't wanna use a tablet and I'm going to mine where he wants to keep paper, but if you wanna have a tablet, I'm fine with that. I mean, I myself talk about bringing like a laptop up here so I don't have to have all this.
Well, I use a tablet and my problem was couldn't log on half the time. We had a, we had a problem with the tablets. And I asked this, love, how do you figure this out? Well, I don't know, we've got a problem with it.
Hey, we've got an expert.